Ooh, shot.
Call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. We'll start with an invocation by Councilman McDaniel followed by the pledge by Councilman Steppe. Please stand with me.
Mayors, pray. Heavenly Father, bless this assembly as we continue to promote the well-being of our city, the city of Cartersville. We live in a close knit and I believe that you have provided us with a good place to work, play, and provide for our families. Help each of us continue to confide in each other and analyze prior to appointing figures that the other persons, which I'm guilty of myself, help us to look at ourselves first in Jesus' name, our pray. Amen.
Amen.
Throw me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the republic, which stands one nation, and our God, indivisible, with whose name the earth is sacred.
Ms. Keeling, the roll, please.
Carrie Hodge, Ward 1. Jay Steppe, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tinsinger, Ward 3.
Here.
Lindsay McDaniel, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Lori Pruitt, Ward 6.
Well, we got just enough, so that's fine. We are going to roll right into the agenda. First item is the approval of the council meeting minutes from our June 16th meeting. Council has been given these minutes well in advance of tonight. Chair will entertain any additions, corrections, deletions, or motions.
Mayor didn't see any deletions or corrections. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved unanimously. We've got a public hearing that we'll handle this evening. Mr. Manino, if you'll do the honors.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The first one was Z-11-03. That was a request by Henry Floyd to rezone property at the corner of U. Harley Road and West Avenue from the office commercial zoning category to the general commercial category. This was recommended for your approval by the Planning Commission. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading. Mr. Watkins, who has been representing this case, is unable to be here. One of his associates is here if there are any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Randy at this point? Thank you, sir. I will now open up a public hearing for case Z-11-03. If anybody wishes to step forward and speak either for or against, they may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for case Z-11-03. Chair will entertain any motions or any discussion on this item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We have a special use application.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. As you're aware, at the last meeting, I noted this application was dependent upon a Board of Zoning Appeals application. Special use criteria are listed in the ordinance relating to this particular application. They did not meet that criteria, so they had applied to vary some of that criteria. That variance was actually denied, making this application out of order. With that, I'll leave it to Council to either vote to just have it removed from the agenda. They can act on the application, open up the public hearing. Again, I'll leave it to y'all to decide.
Thank you, sir. Well, I'll say that since it is out of order, that we just remove this item from the agenda and move forward. The next item is a DOT letter of concurrence. Mr. Anderson.
Yes, Mayor and Council. This letter is in reference to our Leek Mounds Riverwalk T-grant, $750,000 grant. DOT is amending our schedule and they require a signature from you for this letter of concurrence to concur with this schedule change, and I recommend your approval on this.
Okay. Any questions for Greg? Or any discussion? If there is none, then the Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Greg. We have CM at Risk. Mr. Porter.
Yes, Mayor and Council. This construction manager at risk contract is with Potts Construction and Graham Commercial Contractors. Is that we've gone through the process, council interviewed firms, and have selected Potts and Graham as provider to do construction manager for this public safety building on Cassville Road and our new fire station number four in MLK. Contract before you stipulates that there's a pre-construction fee and there's a management fee from these firms of 5.5%. And there's also general condition costs, which total the combination of all these costs, assuming a $12 million project for both these buildings in the neighborhood of 10.95%, which is in range of contracts with state agencies that are in place now. The contract allows us to recoup the savings if there are savings below the total contracted price. Some additional information discussed with Dave Buser with Potts during the, after the work session, he asked a question about contractor subcontract pricing. We actually know that coming into the September 1st council meeting for the guaranteed maximum price, whether we make a decision on going with subcontract number one, two, or three on depending on each particular service. So we'll know that ahead of time going into the process, and then that decision will be made and brought forth with the City Council at September 1st meeting at the very latest. But I do recommend approval of this contract. And if this goes forward, there will be a job fair next Friday between 10:00 and 12:00 at, or between 10:00 and 2:00 at our Civic Center to try to get all local participants to come over. There'll be advertisements in the local newspaper to allow those individuals to be aware of it. I've also been given our business license list and Bartow County Business License List of contractors and subcontractors. And Potts and Graham are making contracts, contacts with those individual contractors to make sure they're aware of the job fair, and so we're trying to get as much local participation in this process as we can. I do recommend approval of the contract.
Okay. Any questions for Dan on this item?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Earl, you mentioned something about a trade van.
Yes, sir.
I'm sure that would be well covered, date, time.
Yes.
And is it possible that some of the type of employees that the contractors are looking for could be listed ahead of time? For example, if I'm good at mixing mud, plumbing, or roofing, and those things are not listed, that I can go about a bit?
Well, we're trying to contact as many people as we can. Like I said, it'll be advertised in the paper starting tomorrow till next Thursday, and it's next Friday at our Civic Center from 10:00 to 2:00. And also making phone, telephone contacts with individuals based on our business license list and also the Bartow County Business License List.
So at least would it include the type of workers that they're looking for?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else? If no other discussion is in, Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve this contract.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We've got software for the police department. Chief Culpepper.
Mayor, council members, we're asking that you approve a contract for our software support agreement. This is an annual agreement that we've signed for a number of years with USA Software Incorporated. They provide the software that takes care of our reporting process, our booking process, all our data management. This is in the amount of $28,399.20. We do have a current e-Verify Save document on file, and we ask that you approve this. It's a budgeted item.
Okay. Any discussion on this item or questions for the chief?
Chief, I have a question. I just now thought of it. I see that it is a budgeted item. Is this the kind of thing we can use any of our DEA funds for? Do we, have we looked into that?
Yeah, I think this is. I had to go back and look and see which line item it's coming out of. I know it was budgeted, but I'll check and see if it's coming out of asset forfeiture.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the purchase as described.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, Don, you've got these electric line re-closers for the electric departments.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The city of Cartersville Electric Department would like to purchase two three-phase electronic re-closers to use on our system. These are breakers that we put out on the pole to help us isolate and sectionalize during times of trouble such as storms, vehicles that might hit pole. It helps with reliability outage time. We can isolate it and have a small section off instead of a large section. We currently have seven re-closers on our system now, but the units that we use are no longer available. So we've been able to locate, we've been able to locate two refurbished units. If we were to go out and buy new units, they're $25,000 apiece. And so we found two refurbished units that carry the same warranty as a new unit, and they're compatible with our units that we currently have. They are compatible with the software. They're compatible with the controls, so we only have one bidder on this because the units that we're after are no longer manufactured, and they would not be compatible. So in 1998, when we bought these other units, they were approximately $17,000 at that time. And as I mentioned, that was over 10 years ago. And as I mentioned, the refurbished unit is $11,376. And this is from Florida Transformers, who we do business with quite often, and we do have the e-Verify documentation.
Okay. Any questions for Don on this item?
Mayor, I've got a question. Don, what is the life of a re-closer? I don't have a clue.
Well, it's a, I had mentioned earlier, 30 years, but we've got equipment, we've got electrical equipment online that if it's maintained, it'll last, I'd say 50 years.
So refurbished one is not a problem?
No, we're, we have a lot of confidence in the units that we have, and we're very happy to be able to locate these units at a cost savings.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? If there are none, then the Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Dan, we've got audit services.
Yes, Mayor. Tom Reinhardt has advertised and solicited bids, and he's recommending to go with Williamson Company for our fiscal year 2011, just ended, and recommend approval of a contract not to exceed $36,200 for these audit services.
Any questions for Mr. Porter on this item? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We've got a number of things from the water department. Mr. Bolanex.
Mayor, council, at our water pollution control plant, we have two recycle pumps that are in need of being rebuilt. These pumps we use to recycle plant effluent for processed water at the plant. This saves us about $5,000 a month versus using potable water. Bids were received from two different repair groups. Rome Electric Motors Works submitted a low bid in the amount of $11,604. We recommend award of this offer to Rome Electric Works in the amount of $11,604. We do have e-Verify Save documentation on hand, and this will be paid for out of budget.
Okay. Questions? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion, second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Continue on it.
Right. The city of Cartersville currently has a SPOSS project under design for the widening of the bridge at Nancy Creek on Sugar Valley Road. This project involves construction in the area where we currently have a proposed feeder main line designed. What we're proposing to do is to include open cut installation of a short 100-foot section of pipe. This will allow for a savings of about $50,000 if it's done during bridge construction and can be installed by open cut versus if we wait until after the bridge is constructed, it will have to be bored. The proposed main is a design that is complete, is done by Jacobs Engineering. What we would like to do is have them prepare bid or construction documents and drawings to be included in the bridge construction contract. This will involve a slight redesign. They have given us a proposal for amount not to exceed $9,813. This is a reasonable price. It will be paid for from SPOSS funds. We do have proper e-Verify Save documentation in on them.
Okay. Any questions on this item? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve these engineering services from Jacob. Second.
Motion, second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We've got a couple change orders. Why don't we handle both of these together?
All right. The first one is at our water pollution control plant, we have an existing contract with CNL Contractors of Dallas, Georgia to install some plant process piping. During construction, we found out we had a conflict with the existing route, or the proposed route that we had in mind. It involved putting in some additional fittings. This is a large diameter pipe, 24-inch diameter, so to do this rerouting came to an amount of $10,845. For this change order, this will bring the total contract amount to $26,795. We do have the e-Verify Save documentation on it. We recommend approval of this change order for $10,845.
Okay. Any discussion on that first change order? You'll continue on. We'll handle both change orders in one motion, please.
Okay. We also have a re-roofing project going on at the Distribution and Collection Building. After the roof was replaced, we found that we had some rusted through wall panels. We'd like to have the same contractor replace these panels. They have given us a price of $6,640 to do this work. This would bring the total project cost to $30,000, $30,040. We recommend approval of this change order.
Okay. Any discussion on this change order item? If there are none, the Chair will entertain a motion for approval of both of these change order items.
Motion for approval of both the change order items. Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion's carry unanimously. Before we get to the citizen survey, there are two items to add to the agenda, council. I'll need your motion, second, and approval to add those two items to the agenda.
Make a motion to add two items to the agenda.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And those items are added. First one is a resolution for a new joint development authority. Mr. Archer.
You have before you a proposed resolution, not necessarily a joint resolution, with Bartow County and the city of Cartersville. The purpose of this resolution is to authorize, approve, and create a second joint city of Cartersville, Bartow County Development Authority. The reasons for this are financial reasons, things that this authority could be created to do that the existing authority can't do. The anticipated savings to the both city and county would be somewhat astronomical. The resolution also proposes to appoint four members of this new joint authority by the city and four members by the commission. The four city proposed appointees are Greg Fresby and Mark Henley for a two-year term, David Caswell and Malcolm Cooley for a four-year term, and then Carlos Calhoun, Ronnie Evans by the county for a two-year term, Ed Rush and Eric Strickland by the county for a four-year Request and recommend that you adopt this resolution, and should you do so, it will be forwarded to the county for its consideration and hopeful adoption in the Wednesday meeting next week on June 13th. Once this resolution is adopted by the county and the city in extent to the sector state, the new authority will be created and can begin the operation of its intended function.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Archer on this resolution? If there are none, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And the last item, Mr. Riggs.
Yes, Mayor and Council, our backhoe got the boom damaged last week, and we need to replace it to be able to use it. And John Deere representative has given us a price of $11,274.14 to repair it. So we're asking your approval of that.
Okay. And I think Jay says during the work session, that is a local vendor that's doing the workforce?
Yeah, they're in a dairy field.
Okay. Very good. Any questions or comments on this item?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
I must go to Newland Coats. That is a new boom.
That is a new?
Yes, sir. It deflected the booms like a box beam, so it deflected the bottom and wrinkled the side.
Okay. Is there no other questions or discussion? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our last item of the evening is a presentation. First, I'm guessing of many, for our citizen survey results. Tom Quest.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you recall, this recent past spring, we conducted our fifth citizen survey. We conduct them every other year here in the city, and this is a really good opportunity for us to gain some insight into the opinions and perceptions of the citizens of Cartersville. So a very valuable service that is provided to us by National Citizen Survey, and I appreciate having the opportunity to present this data to you and also those out there listening on the radio or watching on TV, maybe reading about it tomorrow. So just a couple general points of information before we get started. Make sure my clicker works here. The survey was sent out to 1,200 people. 331 of them responded. I'd like to thank those folks for responding. It's a good way to get your voice heard. Even if you're not loudest person, everybody has an equal opportunity to participate and have their voice heard, and so we appreciate that, and we hope that the next time around that even more folks will participate. This is very important. 30% response rate is about typical. They range anywhere from 25 to 40 on average, so we feel pretty good about that response rate. The margin of error on all these questions is plus or minus 5%. So that means that you can say with 95% confidence that the number that you see reflected here is within five percentage points of what reality is. Also, if you're looking at trends, any change from one year to the next that is eight percentage points or greater would be considered significant. Otherwise, it's within that margin of error, so you don't want to jump to any conclusions about small trends that are insignificant. So tonight, I'm going to talk about the overall community quality perceptions, the environmental quality perceptions, as well as civic and social engagement. I'm planning to spread these presentations out over at least four meetings. We'll see how long this takes. I don't want anybody to fall asleep. Hopefully, this will be interesting enough, but I don't want to keep you too late. So without further ado, let's move on. Okay, the first question, we asked folks about the overall quality of life in Cartersville, and this is something that we got pretty good responses on. This trend has been stable, and this year, 80% of the people in Cartersville rated the quality as excellent or good. And I'll use this first slide as an example. If you notice on the right side of the chart, there are two icons. The top one is a map of the US. The bottom one is a map of the southeast. We compare ourselves across the country to other municipalities and counties that have participated in this exact same survey with the exact same questions. So the top icon is going to tell you how we compare to the nation, and the bottom icon is going to tell you how we compare to the southeast.
And will this information, or is it already, or is this available online?
That's a great point. Thank you. I meant to mention that. This information is posted on our website at cityofcartersville.org, so you can find it on there, every single piece of information. I appreciate you pointing that out. So as you can see here, our citizens rated the overall quality of life in Cartersville similar to others throughout the nation, how other people rated their communities. Also similar in the southeast. When asked about Cartersville as a place to live, 85% of the respondents believe that it is excellent or good place to live. That's similar to the national norm, and it's above the norm in the southeast. And I think you're going to see, as Councilman McDaniel stated in his prayer, that this is a good place to live, it's a good place to work, it's a good place to raise children. And I think these results are going to reflect that, as you'll see. The trend here has been pretty stable in terms of how people perceive it as a place to live. As a place to raise children, it's been pretty stable for the past eight years. 81% of the respondents believe that it's an excellent or good place to raise children. That's above the national norm, and it's actually considered much above the southeast norm, so.
What is the trigger that makes it much above? Is there a numerical?
That information is not provided. The survey company keeps a certain amount of the information, I guess, hidden because, you know, it's their livelihood to be able to, you know, provide this information, but it's significantly higher is kind of how they put it, so. Cartersville is a place to retire. We actually saw a little bit of improvement between, I guess, in the year 2009, we surveyed, there was a jump, and we're currently at 69% of the population think that it's an excellent or good place to retire. That's above the national norm and similar to the southeast norm. When asked about the overall image or reputation of the city of Cartersville, 72% of the respondents believed it was excellent or good. That is similar to both the national and the southeastern norm. That has been a stable trend. This is really kind of a telling statistic here. When asked how likely you are to remain in the city of Cartersville for the next five years, 86% of the respondents said that they would be very or at least somewhat likely to stay, and that's above both the national and southeastern norm. So it sounds like people plan to stay here, so that's a good thing. When asked whether they would recommend living in Cartersville to someone who asks, 88% were either very or somewhat likely to recommend it. That's similar to the national norm, and it's above average in the southeast. Okay. When we start looking kind of, I guess, aesthetically, the overall appearance of Cartersville was rated as excellent or good by 73% of the respondents. That is above the norms for both the national and southeastern comparisons, and that is a stable trend as well. Cleanliness of Cartersville, 69% rated it excellent or good. That's similar to the national and southeastern norm. The quality of the overall natural environment in Cartersville was 69% rated it excellent or good. That's also similar to both the national and southeastern norms. This is interesting. The preservation of natural areas such as open space, farmlands, and green belts was rated as excellent or good by 66% of the respondents, and it's especially interesting because that is a statistically significant jump in the percentage of people who rated that excellent or good from 2009 to 2011. And that 66% is much above both the national and the southeastern norm. So that's an area where we, you know, are perceived as really excelling, so that's just something to take note of. Air quality. Air quality continues to be an area where the perception is pretty low. 55% of the population believe that the air quality here is excellent or good. When compared to the national average, that is much below the norm, and much below the norm in the southeast. It's less, it's below, not much below. Okay, we're moving into the social and civic engagement portion, kind of taking a look at how our citizens perceive the social fabric of our community. When asked about the sense of community, 76% of the respondents claimed that the city, there was an excellent or good sense of community. That's much above the national and southeastern trends, and I think that really, you know, actually, it speaks to our new city logo and tagline, be charmed, be prosperous, and be long. I think that this survey is representative of what we all kind of informally think about this community as being a tight-knit place where people get along, so that supports that theory, if you ask me. Openness and acceptance of the community towards people of diverse backgrounds, that's been a stable trend. Currently, 58% of people here responded that it was excellent or good, and that's similar to the national and southeastern norms. About how often, if at all, do you talk or visit with your immediate neighbors? 56% of the respondents said that they talk or visited with neighbors at least several times per week. That is much above the national norm and similar to the southeastern norm, so it sounds like people in the south may be a little bit more neighborly. I don't know. That's.
More front porches.
And that's just about a significant increase also from 2009 to 2011. That's eight percentage points that it's increased from that time period. I don't know if that's an anomaly or if something happened, but it's a good sign anyways. When asked if you have provided help to a friend or a neighbor, 96% of our respondents said that they had provided help to a friend or a neighbor at least once in the last 12 months. That's similar to the national and southeastern norms. And I'd ask those 4% why they haven't provided help to a friend or a neighbor.
I think that's a, I mean, somebody asks you that question, of course. You're not going to check, no, I haven't helped anybody in the last 12 months, so.
Well.
Maybe there's a 4% honesty range there.
Well, you know, that's a good point. The good thing is that's the same question that they ask everywhere else.
That's true.
So, you know, it would be everybody all across the country that wasn't being honest. So anyways, moving right along. Opportunities to participate in social events and activities, 67% of our respondents responded that that was excellent or good opportunities. That's similar to the national norm and above the southeastern norm. Opportunities to attend cultural activities was 61% responding excellent or good. That's above both the national and southeastern norm, so that's a strong, strong area for us, cultural activities. Opportunities to participate in religious or spiritual events and activities, 82% of our population rated that as excellent or good. That's also above the national and southeastern norm, so that's another strength. This is a very high number when compared to others. Participated in religious or spiritual activities in Cartersville, 71% of our respondents claim to have been at least once in the last 12 months, and that is much above both the national and southeastern trend. Excuse me, southeastern norm. When asked about opportunities to volunteer, 78% said that those opportunities were excellent or good. That is above both the national and southeastern norm. Okay, so here's what people actually did. Those who participated or volunteered their time to some group or activity at least once in the last 12 months, 47% of the respondents claimed to have done so. That is similar to the national norm and above the southeastern norm. So it looks like our people are getting actively involved in volunteering. Those who participated in a club or civic group in Cartersville at least once in the past 12 months, 35%, that's also above the national and southeastern norm. So I'm seeing more and more evidence that people are indeed civically involved and socially involved here. Opportunities to participate in community matters, 66% rated it as excellent or good. That's similar to both the national and southeastern norm. Attended a meeting of local elected officials or other local public meeting, percent of people participating at least once in the last 12 months. We got 23% who said that they had done that. That's below both the national and southeastern norms. Watched a meeting of local elected officials or other public meeting on cable television, the internet, or other media. Those who had done so at least once in the last 12 months, only 31%. That is much below both the national and the southeastern norms. And this trend has steadily been on the decline, so I don't have any answers as to why that is, but it's definitely something I would say to take note of. Those who are registered to vote, it's 82% of the respondents reported that they were indeed registered to vote. That is similar to the national and the southeastern norms. And then finally, the last slide. We asked who voted in the last general election and who they voted for. No, I'm just joking. We didn't ask who they voted for. 73% of the respondents claimed that they voted in the last election, and it looks like they peaked out 76-76 during the presidential election years, and then again in this latest general election. That's similar to both the national and the southeastern norm. So that number does seem a little bit high, but again, as I stated earlier, they're asking these same questions everywhere, so it's similar, and I suspect they're probably a little bit inflated, but I would guess about the same.
Sure, the 25% of the votes aren't being counted because 76% are voting.
Exactly, exactly. So, but anyways, again, you know, the same questions are asked everywhere, so there is that sort of common denominator. You know, these comparisons to others, they are, this is a valid and reliable statistical tool, and I think that you can put, you know, a lot of faith in these, especially as they relate to comparisons between the other jurisdictions across the country and in the southeast. So that wasn't too bad. That didn't take too long, and hopefully you found it interesting. I'm planning on delivering, you know, probably three more presentations and focusing on the other areas that were surveyed. If those of you out there who are listening or watching or interested, as the mayor stated earlier, this information is all available on our website. I certainly encourage you to read it. I think it helps to kind of get to know the community, see what some of the priorities are, see what some of our strengths and weaknesses are, and there's some good information in the executive summary as well.
Is that link right on the homepage, or is there a?
I believe so. Yeah, it's right on the homepage. It shouldn't be too difficult to find. You can always call us if you can't find it, and we'll help get you there, but thank you all very much for your time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and look forward to the next presentation.
Good. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any other business that needs to come before council this evening?
Yes, Sir Mayor and Council. I'd like to make a few announcements of some of our programs we have going on. Next Friday night, July the 15th, will be our series of our moonlight hikes at Pine Mountain, be leaving around 8:30, so I'd like you to join us on that. We've also got a series of free football camps for our youth football players. We've got two. One will be sponsored by a former Cartersville Hurricanes standout, Florida State standout, and now Detroit Lion, Andre Fueellen. He and the Cartersville High School coaches will be doing a free camp on Saturday, July the 18th, I'm sorry, July the 16th, and that's limited to 100, first 100 participants. Andre's got prizes for, or gifts for those 100, so that's a first come, first served. Then we've got our second camp by Cartersville High School coaches, it'll be July the 25th through the 28th. And this weekend, Saturday, in Dalton, our Cartersville-Cobia swim team will be swimming in our district meet, and we've got state GRPA baseball teams in Savannah, in Augusta, and in Columbia County playing as we speak, so it's just a busy time for parts and wreck. Thank you.
I'd join you Friday, but every time I go to do the moonlight hikes, it rains, so.
Sorry.
We need it to rain. I'll join you. Anything else that needs to come before council this evening?
Mayor, just a comment. In June and July both, we had a lot of people in Cartersville for our big concerts, and thank you to police and fire, DDA. We received a lot of compliments. It's a big free concert. The city participates along with some sponsors, but it brings a lot of folks here, and hopefully they come back many, many times and enjoy our restaurants and our shops, so just thanks a bunch, gentlemen. Appreciate all the help to make that such a nice evening. Another one in August, another in September.
Very good. John Boyd? Anybody? Motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Good.
Didn't get a hurrah.